Very important to each one of you on council. As I explained during my confirmation hearing, my goal is to have the Law Department staff look like the city that we serve. And one of our challenges is making sure that diverse attorneys are aware of the interesting work that we do here in the department and the opportunities that we offer. So we've continued to reach out to the law schools and the affinity bar associations in an effort to increase the pipeline of potential applicants. And some of our efforts, I'm happy to report, are bearing fruit. We've seen renewed interest from diverse candidates for our openings. And most notably, seven of the 11 attorneys who have started with the office as a solicitor are African-American, and six of the 11 are women. We are excited at the quality of the new hires. For instance, our last hire is Demaris Walker. He's an Assistant City Solicitor in a housing unit. He's a Philadelphia native, a public school graduate, and is an honors graduate of Dartmouth College and Yale Law School. Within the department, we're creating a diversity committee to address diverse diversity issues. And I meet monthly with Nolan Atkinson, who's our Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer, to address diversity inclusion issues within the department. In addition, we provide Mr. Atkinson with a monthly list of our diversity numbers so that he can keep track of how we're doing. We've also partnered with the Philadelphia Diversity Law Group to have a diverse attorney of color as part of our summer program. The PDLG program is a leading program for diverse summer lawyers. PDLG selects academically talented students who had been interviewed by many of the big law firms and ultimately hired. This is the first time that we've participated in this program, and we have a wonderful academically talented Hispanic student from Rutgers Law who will be joining us this summer. And finally, we've encouraged many of our diverse attorneys to be involved in the affinity bar associations, such as the barristers, which enables us to increase the profile of our department. Of course, getting, as I said before, getting diverse attorneys in the door is just the first step. The challenge is to keep them, and that's an effort we're also pursuing. And the next issue I want to discuss is our efforts to expand a code enforcement unit. The December 2015 Building Safety and Oversight Report recommended that the city expand the Law Department's capacity to enforce code violations in court by adding additional staff. In our budget, we seek to add six additional staff to the unit with the funding of $475,000, which is partly responsible for the net increase of $216,000 to $439,000 in Class 100 funding for fiscal year 2017. These additional employees will allow the department to address a greater number of dangerous code violations in court in expedited manner and benefit the overall safety of the city residents and its neighborhoods. In effort to work with the increase in staff, the Court of Common Pleas has recently allowed additional time for cases involving unsafe and dangerous buildings. And we have a very good working relationship with the courts, and I'm happy to comment. This additional time will also allow code enforcement attorneys to prepare additional cases for court enforcement. Also, a newly created administrative search warrant procedure was approved by the Court of Common Pleas, streamlining the process for gaining entry into properties where there are suspected code violations. That was one of the recommendations in the Oversight Report, and that has already begun. As a result of this new procedure, investigation of code violations will be expedited for possible enforcement action. Lastly, the additional staff will allow the Law Department to take a more proactive approach with LNI in identifying viable cases and prepare for the transition of filing the cases in both municipal court and the Court of Common Pleas. While these efforts are directly tied to improve public safety, the Law Department expects to see a proportional increase in fines and judgments collected as a result of the increased court action. Lastly, I want to speak briefly about affirmative litigation. One of the goals I had coming into the department in January was to actively and affirmatively pursue cases that would directly benefit the city and our taxpayers. Some of this work has already begun and will continue. For instance, to date in fiscal year 2016, we've collected approximately $918,000 from judgments that we obtained in court cases and are continuing to explore ways that we can continue to be proactive to collect judgments and liens from the tax unit and our code enforcement unit. For many years, we obtained these judgments and liens but made no effort to actually collect the money that is duly owed to the city. In addition, as part of our affirmative litigation effort, we're also looking for opportunities to involve the city through filing amicus briefs in litigation in cases where the city has a strong public policy interest. One example recently was our amicus brief in the Pennsylvania Supreme Court supporting the plaintiffs in the ongoing school funding litigation. In that brief, we explained to the court that the city of Philadelphia has a strong interest in fair funding for our schools because we believe the current funding formula is unfair to the city. That formula does not account for the fact that many of our students are poor and many of them are non-English speakers. In addition, council has stretched to find local funding for the schools to make up for the lack of state aid. We will continue to explore such efforts with some of our public interest partners, and we invite you, as members of city council, to work with us if there are similar opportunities that you identify for us to pursue. Lastly, as I stated in my testimony in February, we continue to be in conversation with outside attorneys and other partners to look for ways to bring public interest litigation on behalf of the city. I want to conclude by reiterating what I'd said in February, that there's no greater honor for me than serving as a city solicitor. And at this point, I want to let council know that members of my staff and I are happy to answer any questions you may have regarding our budget.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Talante. Appreciate it. Let's start with Councilman Jones.
Good afternoon, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Chair. A couple, first of all, welcome to, back to city council, this time in a capacity for your budget presentation, and we appreciate your service to the city of Philadelphia. Couple of questions. Have you had an opportunity to look at some of our liability areas, particularly in the area of police accusations of wrongful treatment, both in shootings and in abuse claims?
Yeah, and one of the things we do in the aftermath of, if we have a settlement or a verdict involving a police case, we go back and talk to the police department. We have an individual there, Captain Fran Healy, who works with us. In addition to that, we found what actually has been helpful is the DOJ report, which was involving use of force. Some of the programs that the DOJ recommended are actually useful in seeing a decrease in potential liability. And I'll say, I have with me Craig Straw. Craig was the head of our civil rights unit for close to a decade before he became First Deputy earlier this year, and he can address some of the proactive efforts that we've made.
So I would really specifically like to know pre-soci and post-soci claims, if you could. So, I mean, if you have the data, if you can tell me, you mentioned that they are going down by how much, and what was it before?
Well, Councilman, I can, I can-
Pull the mic to you and say your name.
Councilman Craig Straw. I can tell you from looking at the numbers and having lived with those numbers for the past 10 years, in the last two years alone, we've seen a decrease in the number of lawsuits brought against the police department for claims of excessive force.
How much?
Money-wise, it's sort of a hard thing to quantify. When you look at what the Law Department pays out in civil rights claims each year, there is an average of somewhere between $8 to $10 million. I can tell you, with this last fiscal year, our numbers are lower than they were the year before. Although the fiscal year hasn't ended yet, we predict that will probably end a million or so less than where we were at last fiscal year.
What percentage of those settlements are through awards by juries versus settlements?
I can tell you, awards for juries are very small. Last year, the Civil Rights Unit tried 25 cases. They received 22 defense verdicts. The three plaintiff's verdicts, I think totaled less than $150,000. In the year before that, the Civil Rights Unit tried 40 trials, and won 33. They got seven plaintiff's verdicts, and I know the verdicts did not total $1 million.
Well, we're moving the needle in the right direction. Thank you for that. I guess one of the other things that came up before you, so I'm making the demarcation for you. One of the issues was conflict case contract, I believe it was. Did we, how did we wind up with that on awarding a firm or a rotation of lawyers to take over those cases?
Well, and I can speak specifically about the police cases because that's often sometimes when it occurs. So if the city sued, and there is some individual liability for the officers, there may be a conflict between the officers and the city. And we typically issue RFPs with respect to that. None has come since I've inherited a lot of those, so we haven't had any new RFPs dealing with that. But it's something, as you know, it costs the city four times more to send cases out than to do it ourselves, so we want to do as many cases as possible within the Law Department. But the reality is that we have an ethical obligation, if there's a direct conflict, that we can't represent two clients who have a conflict. And so, I don't know, I don't know if Craig has the, is aware of any particular RFPs we've issued since I've been in there, but we've inherited. Marshall Dennehy's, the NFU cases, as you know, Officer Richard Dello and Narcotics Fair Unit, after they're acquitted, we have close to 200 lawsuits that were brought as a result of that. We've had to get outside counsel for them because of the potential liability.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dom?
Thank you, Chairman Greenley, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
I have a few questions. I didn't realize that, this is really a positive thing, by the way, I didn't realize that you are, you have to maximize the city's ability to collect delinquent taxes. I love that. It's great.
Well, we know we've had conversations about this. That's something that we are working with the Revenue Department so that we can do it in a sort of very holistic fashion.
So I have, I have the February, I don't have March, but I have February's list from the Revenue Department of the different delinquent taxes. So my questions are related around a lot of the delinquencies, and what can we do to collect or write off or clean up our books? So I'll give you some examples. Wage taxes that are delinquent, it's about $44 million. 24 of it's principal, the rest is interest and penalties. But can we get a plan in place to go after that, collect it, or clean it up? I'll give you the rest, he can give you the overview.
Okay. And what I'll take the opportunity to do, Councilman Dom, because there are people here who are much more expert in this, if I could invite Frank Piva, who's our Chief Revenue Counsel.
Sure.
I'll pretend like I know what I'm talking about, but he actually would know.
That's okay.
So if I, if I can get Frank-
So just identify yourself from person.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Frank Piva. I'm the Chief Revenue Counsel for the City of Philadelphia.
So we have $44 million of wage taxes. We have $130 million of business income and receipt BERT taxes. We have $331 million of real estate taxes, $125 to $150 million of water and sewer. We have use and occupancy landlord tax of $16 million, and use and occupancy tenant tax of $3 million. We have, I don't understand how realty transfer taxes are delinquent, $3.4 million, because they're paid at the closing by the title company.
Yes, but sometimes there are assessments made by the Revenue Department where someone claimed an exemption, but they were not eligible for it.
Special cases, I got it. So, and then there's something called commercial trash fee, that's $32 million delinquent. So my overview is, there's about $750 to $775 million, give or take a few dollars. And, you know, one of my goals is to collect the money or clean it up. And so my question to you is, how can we, how can you help accomplish that goal?
Well, I mean, that is our goal as well. I mean, what we have is a very large portfolio of receivables. Some of those receivables are uncollectible, and we have, for the past two years, had a program in place to do the proper due diligence to actually write off receivables that are uncollectible. We have written off close to $365 million in receivables in the past two years.
Okay, so wait a second. Now, I had, I had received, when I was running for office, I saw a piece of paper from somewhere, maybe the Controller's Office, that said we had delinquents of $1.8 billion. And then when I was elected, I was, found out you have a process of writing off bad debts. So the form that I have is, after that process is done, we're still at $750 million.
Correct. And the process is ongoing with respect to write offs. With respect to the collection of the receivables, there's multiple tools that are being used. There are some receivables, like say wage tax, where we do pursue and collect, obtain judgments for it. Some of those judgments are not paid, yet the person is still alive, and there's always still the possibility that someday they'll hit the lottery or whatever. So those receivables unfortunately do not get written off, yet we do have a judgment against them, so they're taken care of. There's also receivables that are under agreement. So it still shows as being a delinquency, yet the individual is making payments against that amount.
How about the BERT? The BERT's $133, $130 million. What's the process to collect?
The majority of the BERT is out with collection agencies, and the larger BERT we're handling in-house to obtain judgments and hopefully obtain the payment. I mean, that's, the goal is not really obtaining judgments. The goal is to collect.
So from my, our perspective, I think it's to collect or write off, so that when Moody's gives us a rating, we don't have this large delinquency. If it's not collectible-
Of course.
Let's call it a day and get rid of it if we can't collect it.
No, we're on the same page on that. It's just, it can't not be done arbitrarily. We need to do due diligence to make sure that anything we write off, we're writing off with valid reasons, and not just because we want to make the books look less.
So what is the commercial trash fee of $32 million that's out?
Okay, that is a fee that's for, I think it's $300 a year, that's imposed on landlords for trash pickup. And that is a tax that, not a tax, excuse me, that is a fee that for a number of years was handled by the Streets Department, and in the last 18 months, it moved over to revenue, and now the Law Department is actively involved in getting collections. The tool that's primarily used for those collections is collection agencies. There are some cases that are amounted to as much as $2,000 or $3,000, but for the most part, they're very small dollar cases. We do collect a lot of that when folks try to sell their property as it's leaned, and we do receive payment for those SCE fees during that.
Let me make one other comment about the real estate taxes and water and sewer. I don't know, you know, there's a website called Philly Delinquency. You've probably seen the website. And there's a guy who's pretty smart, Chris Sawyer, who runs that website. And I met with him recently, and he said to me that 40% of the people who don't pay their taxes, delinquents, don't live in Philadelphia. But here's the interesting statistic that he told me, 70% of the money doesn't live in Philadelphia, which was staggering to me. That's on the real estate tax delinquencies.
Yeah, I'm not-
Do you have any information to back that up, or to check it?
I'm not certain. That sounds high to me, in all honesty.
Sounded high to me also, but that's, he's a pretty accurate person.
It's, real estate delinquencies are somewhat challenging. We have different tools. For example, we obtained this recent tool, Act 93, which allows the city to take our real estate lien and transfer it to another Pennsylvania jurisdiction, and that lien would act as a personal judgment on that property that the person owns outside of the city. The trick, of course, to being able to transfer those things is, one, you have to identify other property owned by the delinquent outside the city. And that becomes somewhat challenging in that the vast majority of our real estate accounts, we do not have social security numbers for. So they're, you know, if it's John Smith, it's really hard to figure out which John Smith it is to attach their property outside the jurisdiction. Our sheriff sales have increased as a tool, and the other tool that's been really extremely effective is sequestration, which is where we go after landlords who have not paid their real estate taxes. And we basically go to court to have a receiver appointed to take control of the property. You'd be surprised how quickly landlords will come forward and enter into an agreement or pay the full amount in order to avoid the loss of control of their properties. And we, we're basically getting around $18 to $20 million a year, and it seems to be growing every year. So it's a very efficient tool, much more efficient than a sheriff sale. Although a sheriff sale has the benefit of actually cleansing the property, because we have a lot of properties in this jurisdiction where the people who originally owned them have been dead for, you know, decades. And trying to find out who has the actual ownership interest is a challenge, and a lot of tangled title. And the sheriff sale process, as a result of all the notice requirements, has made an effort to find the right people, bring them to the table. Sometimes they're surprised they even still have an interest in the property, and if the property's valuable, they're happy. But we've been collecting a lot of money through that, and it cleanses the property so that if we do sell it at the sale, there's now a new person who we can hopefully identify and make sure they pay going forward.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I want to thank you and appreciate your acknowledgement of the importance of diversity. Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds, we sound like a broken record, but we'll keep playing it. So it's nice not to have to play it this afternoon. Want to talk about, I want to talk about collections, since you were just finishing up, so I don't know if Mr. Piva wants to come back. Is there any restrictions with us asking for social security numbers when we file deeds? If that is one of the impediments to collections?
Well, one of the impediments to collection is when a person acquires a property, they can record the interest in the property under the law without providing a social security number.
I know, but is there any legal obstacle to us requesting it as part of the real estate transfer as we ask for EIN numbers?
Yes, there are limitations on our ability to do that. It's optional.
Okay. Is there any reason why we can't make it a legal requirement? If that is a collection obstacle?
There are some difficulties with that. We have actually, that would be, that's what we want, and so we've looked into doing that various ways, and it always comes back down to, we don't have the authority to, as a legal matter, to require it.
In our, in our real estate transfer, even though someone, when someone acquires a property, essentially they become a vendor or customer of the city, even though that is the case? You know you're an expert at this.
Yeah, it's-
Give me the how. Give me the how.
It's just, there's-
We can have a, okay. I just found that interesting. I think we need to keep, continue to have a conversation, because that seems like something that we should be able to overcome.
It would make life so much easier for us if we could know exactly who the owners are, and it's just, it's been a challenge.
Okay, well, we can have a conversation. Just want to talk, since you were talking about this, and I know we're working on the water affordability. You have publicly stated that over the last few years, $365 million in receivables have been written off. So why is it that in our water affordability, there is a reluctance by the water revenue law to provide for a certain percentage of forgiveness if people come compliant? If PICO and PGW do it, and you're acknowledging 365 for, let me finish, for poor folks who, had they been in our RAP programs, debt might have been less anyway, and our unwillingness wants people to be compliance requirements to forgive that?
Well, we actually do have a forgiveness program in place today, and that is that if the receivable is more than 15 years old, it is-
I know, we worked on that when I first, I was part of the freshman 15. I got that. I'm now dealing with our, what I hope to be national best practice standards on a water affordability plan. And one of the points of contention has been our willingness to forgive after owner-occupied, low-income residents have become compliant to allow for a certain level of forgiveness if what you're saying to me, it is a practice of the office, and there's an acknowledgement that the consultants and other, PGW and PICO do it.
Well, the City of Philadelphia has a unique position when it comes to water.
I get it.
Sir, speak a little bit more than the mic. It's not always easy to hear.
My apologies. The City of Philadelphia has a very unique position as a utility. As a city-owned utility, the debt for the water is a municipal claim, and that is a lien on the property. So it's not like just a judgment, it's a lien. So if that property ever is sold, the city will get paid, whatever real estate taxes do, whatever water is due. So it's like one of these things where, at some point in time, the city will get paid. Now, there may be situations that may warrant a write-off where the property is extremely underwater, where it's say the value of the property is $20,000, and it owes like $50,000 in water, a very unusual situation. Those are opportunities for, you know, writing off, adjusting it.
I just want to put on the record, because that's been our bone of contention. I, I'm completely optimistic that we will come to some terms of agreement, but it's difficult to hear you say that we're writing off millions and millions of dollars, and that when we're looking at low-income, homeowner-occupied folks, there's a reluctance to-
When we make a decision to write things off, it is a decision based on our inability to collect, that it's just something that we cannot collect on. In situations where it may, a property may be owned by someone who is under the median income levels, but yet has an asset that has value, and we can tell that we're going to get eventually paid from that asset, writing it off even though, you know, they may, you know, be somewhat disadvantaged, they do have an asset that's valuable, and there are other people that are currently paying, their water bills are somewhere situated.
So you're looking at, I get it from a utility perspective. I'm looking at it from someone who would have qualified for our programs had we had an efficient program, that if you take it in a package of, had this person been in the low-income program that they're eligible for, and we recalculated their debt, you're almost looking at the same numbers.
I understand what you're saying.
So it's how you look at the package. I just wanted to put that on the record, because that's still our only bone of contention, but I'm optimistic that we're going to cross that hurdle when we get there.
So am I.
Okay.
You got it. Um, and I guess you started your question.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chairman.
Is it going to be, you know, obviously, if you could be brief, so before other people start giving me dirty looks.
Yeah. No, because it's gonna, I have a whole series on the, on the, the write-offs and the acquisitions on the land bank and-
You want to come back? Is that, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, listen, Talante, I just had some questions, and I think I heard a little bit in your colloquy with Councilman Jones in reference to professional services, and I noticed on pages 16 and 17 of your budget detail in the class 250, you have two items, one for vendors to be determined in reference to legal services, and also vendors to be determined for various expert and various experts. What's, for expert witnesses and medical records, what's been your process, your thinking, your process in reference to selection, especially local businesses and businesses of color?
Good afternoon, Councilman Green. I'm just going to get to that page. But I can speak generally. What we do when we prepare our budget, we look historically at categories of cost that we know is going to come up, but we don't know how or the amount. So we don't have a particular vendor, but we know we may need expert witnesses and so forth. So we put a category aside. And typically, what we, the way we obtain vendors is through RFP. So we, we prepare the materials, OEO comes, talks to us and sets a range, and we post it. And one of the things that we're doing right now, sort of being proactive in terms of trying to increase participation, is to try to get demographic information and diversity information on the front end. So we've actually just did our first, our RFP, this is from the airport, where we have a new attachment. That attachment asks about prospective vendors' diversity practices. Amongst, amongst the things they ask for, they ask for whether the firm's diversity plan or statement of diversity practices, demographic data for the firm in terms of how many partners of color do they have, how many women partners, a percentage of the firm's gross revenue that involve partnerships, joint ventures, and subcontracting opportunities with minority women or disability-owned firms, and any information demonstrating the firm's commitment to diversity. Our hope is that we can know on the front end in terms of what potential bidder's commitment to diversity is, so that way, when we're selecting, we know that we're selecting a firm that's committed to it. So that's sort of in a general way how, but in terms of, in terms of those vendors, we don't know in the front end, when we begin the fiscal year, what they're going to be, but we know we're going to need expert witnesses for our claims cases. So we put that amount, and then when we need them, we try to, we try to, we bid out.
Wonderful. I have a question that Councilman Dom had on a collection perspective, and in looking at your testimony, I think on page one or page two, your testimony talked about the collection efforts and working with the school district. Can you, I think I'm understanding what taxes you're collecting along with the school district. So what I want you to, in addition to, I think liquor by the drink tax and other taxes, can you kind of break down what those taxes are and what's been the- can you kind of break down what those taxes are and what's been the cooperation you've had with the school district?
All right, well, the number one tax that we collect for the school district is the real estate tax. It's a substantial amount that goes to the school district every year. In addition to that, we have the liquor-by-the-drink tax, we have the school income tax, and we have the use-in occupancy tax, all go to the school district.
Yeah, I was, I thought about the school income tax with other tax, but I guess my question is, especially for liquor-by-the-drink, UNO, real estate, and the school income tax, have you found a real partnership with the school district in having to, in trying to collect those taxes? What's been their working relationship with you?
Um, I mean, they're, they're our partner in that, and they clearly are interested in the results that we obtain. We meet with them on a monthly basis. It's usually a conference call, once in a while it's in person, to let them know what the progress is and the different special projects either that law's taking or that the revenue department is taking to enhance enforcement of these school district taxes.
Okay. Also, Solicitor Talanta, you talked about affirmative litigation program, and I know previous solicitors have also engaged in an affirmative litigation program. In addition to some of the things you talked about in your testimony, are there other ideas you have in reference to using this initiative to bring in additional revenue into the city?
Yeah, the way I talk about affirmative litigation, and you apologize to me, I'm a little distracted, there's some horns in the background. I, I look at it in different ways. One sort of tranche of potential affirmative litigation is simply trying to collect on judgments and liens. I call that low-hanging fruit. In other words, over the years, in code enforcement, revenue, and in our claims units, we've accrued a lot of judgments and liens on behalf of the city. And we, as a, typically have not pursued that with any zealousness. We started doing that in, with respect to claims. And now we're in the process of actually expanding that so that we can try to collect liens and judgments obtained by our code enforcement unit through LNI and so forth, as well as through our tax unit, our tax revenue. And so that's one, one tranche of potential affirmative litigation. And the other tranche is sort of more aggressive, sort of predatory lending, consumer actions and so forth. For those ones, we're working with, it's probably going to be through outside counsel, typically plaintiffs, plaintiff's attorneys. We're meeting with them, we're getting ideas from them through the course of testifying and also talking to other attorneys, other municipal attorneys, so the, the city attorney of Baltimore and other, other, other big cities, they've given us some ideas and contacts. We, we think we're, it's promising. And what I want to, what I want to tell counsel is that when we're at a point where we think, you know, we're going to move, I want to be able to give the opportunity to brief you privately on where we're going.
Also, I know you had provided, I believe, an opinion in reference to the proposed sugar-sweetened beverage tax in reference to the city's ability to represent or defend itself against any type of litigation against that. Can you give your perspective on that opinion as well as what additional steps you may need to do from an enforcement perspective if that legislation goes into effect?
Yeah, I can't talk too much about the enforcement, it's mostly on the revenue side, I mean, in terms of, unless there's litigation. But I can tell you, on March 1st, I think I provided a copy to counsel with the permission of the mayor, I, the mayor asked me, acting responsibility for what authority this body has in terms of enacting the proposed sugar-sweetened beverage tax. I gave him the opinion that the law department, and by that, not just me, but the staff working for me, we feel very confident that this, this body has the authority to enact such measures. I identified two potential arguments that we, the law department is familiar with, obviously before me, in the first or second iteration of the legislation and four, five years ago. And we, we think that neither argument is really going to win the day. The first one is the contention that this is a sales tax, and we looked at the body of law that goes back to 1957, which says essentially, under the Sterling Act, we have the authority to pass legislation so long as it doesn't conflict with any other, any state legislation. And what the court will do is look at the incidence of the tax. In other words, where's it going to be imposed on? In this particular case, the imposition will be in the transaction between the distributor and the retailer, as opposed to a sales tax which occurs with the retailer and the consumer. And that's a big distinction in terms of what the, what the court will look at. And the second one would be how the tax is measured. A sales tax naturally is measured by the price. In this particular case, that the proposed legislation measures the tax based on the volume. And while we, there's conversation about how much would be passed through, so long as the legislation does not require the distributor to pass it through, distributors, a business matter, can pass it to retailer, who is a business matter, can decide to pass it to the consumer, the courts will not look at that. The courts will look at where the tax is imposed and how it's measured. And for those reasons, we're, we're pretty confident that it would survive any challenge. And second is a question of uniformity. We've heard some suggestions that someone may argue that it's, it's not uniform because you're taxing Diet Cola, you're taxing regular Coca-Cola one, one way, and you're not taxing Diet Cola. And we think that this body can, we'll be able to present evidence that the sugary drinks, there are health deficits associated with it. By, by that I mean obesity and diabetes. And that this body as a, can make the reasonable distinction between those sugary drinks and other drinks that don't have the sugar in it. So we think on the basis of that, that this, this legislation, we can, we can beat back any challenges to it. And that's, that's my, my opinion as a solicitor, and it's one that I'm very comfortable, obviously, sharing with you and anyone else.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Just to let everybody know, as people are looking quizzical out there, all those folks with their First Amendment rights out on the street will go be in here in about an hour, so, like I said, it could be an interesting evening.
And one thing for Councilman Green, I wanted just to, to make clear for the record, my, my position is simply whether or not this body has authority to enact it. I don't, I don't give an opinion as to whether, what, which side is right or wrong. I'm simply giving the legal opinion. I just want to make that clear for the record, I get it's confusing.
Thank you, thank you. Councilwoman Meryl Sproul?
Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Law Department.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman.
Welcome to these proceedings. This is your inaugural visit, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, three things. One, it's no secret that members of this body care deeply about how, making sure that our government looks like the City of Philadelphia, and more specifically, that the executive level of government looks like Philadelphia. So please, haven't been there now for how many days? How old are you? Ninety?
I'm 40 years old, but four months and maybe a day or so. I think it's actually four months to day.
Wow, okay. So can you speak to how intentional you are or plan to be in the area of increasing opportunity for minorities and women and majority law firms that are receiving city contracts?
Yes, and there are two ways to look at it, Councilwoman. First is to expand the pool of people who should bid on our contracts. And so, consistent with that, I've actually reached out, coming from this legal community, I know the Carton Johnsons, I know the Wadu Damada, I know people, Rich Harris, who I said, I want you to be bidding on our contracts. Obviously, I can't give them advance notice, but if there's an RFP, it involves litigation, I know folk who can do the job, I let them know, you should think about it. Sometimes they come back to me and say-
Pull it closer, because we've been-
I'm sorry. Sometimes they come back to me, they said, we appreciate it, Sosie, but the rate's too low. And I, and I understand that. But other times, they're intrigued, because they say, no one's actually ever reached out to us affirmatively and done that. The second issue is, with respect to any of our, any of our vendors, our current vendors, I've reached out to them and said, one, we want to know your demographic data, who's doing the work? Because the way we, we give credit is one of three ways, billing partner, originating partner, or partner who's, who's actually doing the work.
How do you validate that? Verify that?
I'm starting a process where I'm actually, we've never done that before. We, you know, we may say, well, you said you're going to give 30%. We trust you. But for the first time, we're actually, I'm going to be sending letters and said, you represented that you have, you're going to, you expect 30% of your work to be done by diverse attorneys? Can you give me your hours? Tell me if that's the case.
Yes.
And I think most firms, you know, if that's the case, that is the case.
Sure.
But I don't, and this is also with respect to any subcontractor. So a majority firm bids and says, I'm going to give 40% of the work on a subcontracting basis to a diverse attorney. Now, we want to know whether you've done that. If you haven't, why not? Because we, we assume when people represent that, that's what they intend to do.
Sure. And we heard the stories on the other end, where minority and women, legal eagles, where that's not happening.
They've told me, they've told me.
Okay.
And, and that's something that, you know, and I know, I talked to Angela Dal Burton of OEO, she said that there should be, they have a, I think, is it, is it B2G or something? They have a program where if a vendor is paid by us, they try to see if that vendor has actually paid the subcontractor. There's supposed to be a way to, to validate that. But irrespective of that, you know, we'll be taking our own measures.
Well, that's a paradigm shift, and one that we welcome.
Yeah, I mean, I sat down with Nolan Atkinson, I sat down with Angela Dal Burton and other folks, to just try to come up with a way to, to have our, we sent, we sent, you know, and that's what, $8 million out, that if $8 million is coming from the law department to outside counsel, that it's getting to folks who represent, are more representative of Philadelphia. I mean, it's not going to happen overnight. It would require a lot of, a lot of checking.
Of course not. But if you don't put intentional protocols in place, then nothing happens.
We're committed to it.
The system is not going to change on its own.
We're actually committed to it.
Okay. Secondly, on page eight of your testimony, there's a $400,000 contract to RCDH of Pennsylvania Incorporated. So of course, I'm struck by the fact that it's not a local business, and I'd be willing to learn why that might be the case.
Yeah.
For obvious reasons. And what do they do?
And I think, is it Francis, somebody, I think Francis Beckley can talk to that. But let me give you the skinny. The skinny is that, at the time this contract was issued, it was when they were doing reassessments through AVI, and we needed appraisers to do that work. And many of the appraisers in the city were conflicted out.
Please, please, um-
Yeah, Sosie, you're going to-
I'm so sorry, I keep forgetting, there's a layering horns behind me.
Try to raise the voice a little bit.
No, absolutely.
It's getting hard.
And I have Francis Beckley, who actually, I was telling you was hearsay, it was from her, but she can, she can alert you to that.
Please identify yourself and proceed.
You remember that AVI-
Identify yourself.
Oh, excuse me, I'm Francis Beckley, and I'm a member of the, I used to be in the tax unit, and I'm a member of the Law Department. And I was chief counsel at the time that that contract was put in place. If you'll remember, AVI was a bit of a chaotic, sudden situation. The landowners, the large property owners got ahead of the Law Department in terms of hiring most of the best appraisers. We had very few, we did make efforts to, to look for, and I remember, we discussed it here with counsel, smaller appraisal firms, women-owned appraisal firms, minority appraisal firms, we really couldn't find anybody who was fit, who was equipped to do the work other than this one firm. And they've done a lot of good work.
Other than what?
Than, than the firm that was hired on the emergency basis.
So quickly, briefly, concisely, because that bell's going to ring, what exactly did you do when you say you couldn't find?
We, I know that we placed advertisements, I know that we talked it up among the community of appraisers and real estate tax lawyers, trying to find it. And the people who were recognized as extremely fine, almost all of them had already been engaged by large property owners.
I see.
And so we could not use them.
I see.
And we ended up basically scrambling. I, you know, and on a long-term basis, I don't think we would, I think we would have been able to get a better result. It's also not a field where we found that there are very many, unfortunately, very many minority-
There are or are not?
There are not. And, you know, we would love to encourage firms that want to enter.
So to start date, if the start date is November 1, the end date is when?
I don't-
Is it still?
There's still, if that's still an ongoing contract.
Because I see even with this company, so you found an outside company that also does not have any MBE, WBE, goals, participation, or whatever. Where are they located?
I believe they're, they're located in Conshohocken.
Conshohocken?
Conshohocken, and it's, it's purely assessment services.
I see.
So it's not, they're not like there's opportunities for subcontracting materials or other things. It's just actually a few highly-trained professionals doing the work themselves.
Okay, the bell has rung. And so, city solicitor, we can expect some progress by when? By a year from now with regards to this new protocol you're putting in place for ensuring that lawyers in these large firms who get huge city contracts are making sure that the opportunity gets spread across minority and women-owned lawyers?
As you know, as a lawyer, I'm wary of setting goals, but I think what I want to report to you, Councilwoman, is in three months, I want to meet with you and tell you where we, where we're at.
Okay.
And I think that's more, and it also keeps me on my toes, so I know I have, I have some, a goal set for myself.
Okay, then.
So I have that in my tickler for three months from now to, to come to you and tell you where we're at.
Very well. Thank you, city solicitor, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Ginn?
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Talanta, I'm so, join in welcoming you with my colleagues. And as both of us are new into city council and city government, I'm really looking forward to partnering with your department. There's a lot of hopes there for, from a lot of people. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more about your plans for expanded affirmative litigation? This is an area that I know that you and I have had conversations about a little bit. You've referenced some, some things about expanded consumer protection in particular, something that we've certainly been looking at, and would love to hear what some of your thoughts are about your, what you think is possible in this area.
And, and I'm going to start by probably not giving the answer you want, which is, I, I want to give you a very general overview, but I don't like to let people I might sue know I'm going to sue them. So I can tell you in very categorical terms, the process we're undertaking, and the, what that is, we're first examining what the law is. Unfortunately, in, unlike in California, because they have, they have-
Are you speaking specifically about consumer protection or about affirmative litigation?
Consumer protection, I'm just starting with that. Because that's one of the broad categories of affirmative litigation. Unfortunately, we don't have, under our consumer protection laws, the city doesn't have a lot of, the, the authority to vindicate those. Attorney General's Office does. We do have a false claims ordinance, and that's something that we're exploring. It's been underutilized, and we, we think we have a great opportunity to explore some areas there. Another, what, what the process we're undertaking is, we're inviting, we, we talk to cities who've been very aggressive. And I don't know if you saw, there's no reason you saw, in the Wall Street Journal today, they profiled the City of Providence as, as 20 city attorneys. But they've managed to sort of, you know, push the envelope in affirmative litigation so that people expect this kind of litigation from them. We talked to folks like that, and they said, well, have you thought about A, B, or C? The first thing we have to examine is whether or not we have damages in that area. And we, and we, we see if there are damages, then we look at the legal theory. And the problem is that it doesn't happen overnight. And what I, what I, what I promised counsel is that when we get closer, I'll be in a position to brief you before, before we make any moves.
And, you know, our office would love to work with you, and especially on any type of initiative in partnership with the Attorney General or with the DA's office on, on how to expand particularly around the area of consumer protection.
Absolutely, we would love that.
So is that something that you'd be open to? Great. So I've asked several departments about the cost to the city of settlements and judgments that have been related to alleged police misconduct. And many of these questions have actually been referred to the Law Department.
They owe you for everything, though, I swear.
And I would appreciate, you know, anything that you could do to provide some clarity about this area, and in particular, whether information related to the judgments and settlements is made available to the public, and how often that happens. And two, does the city make any budgeting projections for anticipated annual liability?
So, when we are addressing the, the publicizing of the settlement amounts, every year, I just know through my position as being in, in charge of the Civil Rights Unit, that we would have to put together a list of all settlements involving police, alleged police misconduct. And we would, I think that was through a right-to-know request through the media. And the media then would be provided that information. So I know on an annual basis, the media has provided that information through a right-to-know request. And that has been, at least for the past five or six years that I'm aware of. As far as how we try to gauge our exposure, I can tell you some of the things we do to try to prevent litigation from happening. I know the Civil Rights Unit does training of police, police recruits on a rotating basis. As the recruits are going through the police academy, they spend a session with the civil rights attorneys, talking about Fourth Amendment rights, talking about police paperwork. talking about Fourth Amendment rights, talking about police paperwork. Uh, they do training on dealing with people suffering from mental illness through crisis intervention training. We do follow-ups with the Police Department when we know that there have been settlements made. We, we notify the Police Department, "Here are the settlements that have occurred in the last quarter. Um, if you would like, we can provide you additional information to the Police Department." That's how we work with, uh, Captain Healy. And in regards to giving projections as far as what we expect each year, um, I can say, uh, over the ten years that I've been there, that the settlements have ranged somewhere between eight to 10 million dollars. There would maybe a fluctua, a year where they fluctuate and they go really high, but then there'll be a year where they go back down. Uh, part of the problem there is, and I think it's in any cases, you can't control what happens out on the street. So if you have an incident that potentially has some catastrophic results, you, we're left with dealing with that, but we can't sort of project that that's coming in the future.
And, and Councilman, what we, we have, we have breakdowns that we can share with you, uh, in terms of how much, what we do is we code the, the total payments we've made, right, uh, based on categories by fiscal year. So shooting, excessive force, city motor vehicle, sidewalk fall down. And we have that information that we could, we could share with you, uh, so that you, from the, from fiscal year 2011 up until today.
Um, so I would respond very quickly by saying that FOIA's that are made available to the media is not my interpretation of what's considered publicly available. There's a big difference between if a media entity decides, requests a FOIA of the city government, that's fundamentally different about whether that is actually available to the public for review. Would you agree with that? That's actually not a very publicly available document, then, for the average citizen, for example?
Yeah. And, I mean, all of our settlements, we, we, we can't have confidentiality on our settlements because it's the city's funds. Um, as far as publicizing all of the settlements that occur, I just, that hasn't been something that we've been asked to do.
Okay.
And, 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 Councilman, we're not, we're not, this is a conversation we have with the Police Department, if you'd like. Uh, we're not adverse to it, we're just, we have not done-
Been asked.
Yeah. So-
Okay. That's helpful.
We can, we can look at it.
And I did want to clarify that, um, the eight to 10 million is a significant figure, obviously. I don't think I've, I've heard that before. But, um, I'm, you know, I think that that's a fundamentally different, you know, when you talk about you can't control what happens on the streets, that's, to me, a risk management issue, and there's a certain amount of level. But I think what I'm discussing is an issue of police, alleged police misconduct. And that is something we should want to be able to control and be able to understand better. And, um, does the Law Department review judgments and settlements related to police mis, alleged police misconduct in order to identify any patterns that we can thus control, as opposed to, do we do proactive trainings? Yes, I understand that very clearly. But once a judgment has been entered, settlements have been made, and an analysis of what went wrong has been identified, do you then work with the Police Department to review or identify, um, patterns that, that might need to lead to policy changes or practices for the Police Department?
Yeah. I mean, I think we, we do it, as you, as you indicated, uh, if the liability is not due to a rogue officer or someone, you know, who, if it's actually a result of a policy and, and pattern, uh, we clearly, we identify that, and we reach out, this friend, Healy, who's a captain there, uh, we talk to them, and we talk to leadership. Because ultimately, if there's liability here, it's just a matter of time before the liability reoccurs, and it's everybody's interest to stop it from happening. And I'm saying that generally, uh, but I know Craig's been in the trenches for ten years, uh, dealing with specifically that.
Yeah. On numerous occasions, we'll actually ask the Police Department or request the Police Department to address in their policies and their directives, issues that we've seen come up through cases. And I can tell you, we have been very successful with having a very good working relationship with them, to where if we make recommendations, they're, they're normally enacted by the Police Department.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Sanchez?
Thank you. I just want for the record, since the City Solicitor was talking about the soda tax, the way the law is written, there is a provision that if the distributors don't pay, we will collect to the retail folks. So this notion that the tax is based on the, on the distributors, the law is written with, with a fallback plan?
Yeah, no, my, my, if I-
I know. I'm, I just-
Okay, okay.
It comes across as, you know, based on your, what your legal opinion is, that we're never going to hit the retail guys.
Oh, no, I didn't intend that, at all.
Okay. I just want to be, just to find it for the record, because we agree.
Yeah, okay.
There is a fallback provision, and stores will be taxed if the, if the distributors do not pay.
That's right. If, that, we don't collect from the distributor, the retailer will be, uh, may be liable.
Just for the record.
Yeah.
I'm going to do, real quickly, because, uh, the Chair wants to get through the public defenders, and there's an opportunity that, um, the City Solicitors will get called back. Can someone confirm for me whether or not we are doing sheriff sales on owner-occupied water lanes?
I'm ordered that?
Yeah, watered.
Okay. Um, no, we are not doing-
Excuse me. This is Frank Piven.
That's okay. You don't have to jump out. You're so quick. Write in the microphone, please.
Okay. Um, the sheriff sales that we've conducted, um, with respect to water, have been limited to, um, stormwater. That is, um, properties where they do not have water service.
Okay. All right. I just want that clarification, um, for it. The other, um, there's a little incongruency with, um, the Law Department is claiming that you're going to improve collection debts by 35%. In the testimony by the Water Department, they said that they're only going to improve collections by 2%, and using that to justify the water rate increase.
Right. Um, you have to remember that the, what we collect, I, the Law Department, is a subset of the larger, um, collectible dollars that the Water Revenue Bureau collects. So when I have those increases, those increases are specifically what the Law Department will be able to obtain.
So what gets in your portfolio versus the traditional revenue collection strategy?
Right, exactly.
Okay. So, and we'll talk, you know, again, when you do the callback, we can get a little bit into the, the water revenue debt and the way it is aged and quickly, um, increasing. As it relates to the coupling of water and real estate debt for collection purposes, are owner-occupied properties going to fall in that batch?
Well, owner-occupied properties, um, are subject to sheriff sale. There are, um, significant, um, safety net that this council passed with the owner-occupied payment agreements, which, um, enables, um, taxpayers to pay based on their income levels.
Mm-hmm.
And it also, um, prevents any type of, um, enforcement actions with respect to past derelious.
Right. We, in, the early indications was, we had a 50% non-compliance rate, in part because if you didn't pay last year's debt, and you're not on a monthly plan for this year's debt, we're going to be a non-compliant, like, you know, within a matter of months. So are we moving, the same way we want to move those debts together, I mean, it is our hope then, when our water affordability, affordability regulations are in place, we can couple them together for payment, for purposes of payment. I just want to make sure that, again, as the revenue strategy, collection strategies align, that this council has been, um, very affirmative about protecting owner-occupied properties as we change our regulations to help people become compliant, so that, um, there, there shouldn't be a conflict with that. There's plenty of debt of people who can afford it for us not to, to go after the owner-occupied. I just want to be, um, uh, highlight that. And then, um, I guess, if we're going to get a call back from the Law Department, because Mr. Chair is upset here.
I'm not upset. I'm just stating for the record.
Stay as long as you want.
This place is going to be, get very busy, so. You have anything else?
Um, I'll wait for my questions, um, for, for the next time. I may forward them to the, to the Law Department to get them prior to. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman Dom?
Thank you, Chairman Green. I have a few more follow-up questions. Um, this, I'm going to leave you the brief questions. Just give me a brief answer if you can, so we can get through this. In the areas of sequestration, right, it seems to me that the use in occupancy, landlord tax, and use in occupancy tenant tax are based on tenants being in there paying rent.
Right.
Which you should be able to then use that program for those taxes, or you can't?
See, um, we could use sequestration for the collection of the use in occupancy tax.
Right.
Um, it's my understanding we cannot, um, use it for that privileged tax, for that. It's only with respect to, um, the municipal claims. So-
Is there any reason why you can't use it? Because that's $20 million.
Because the, the law is, is limited. I mean, the issue that occurs, and in, in fact, there are some folks who have as part of their business plan, is that the landlords are not collecting the UNO tax. Instead, they are filing with the, um, the city, what we call a UO3, saying, um, "The tenant hasn't paid me the tax, so don't look to me for the tax. Look to the tenant." And this may be in cases where the landlord, in fact, did get paid the rent. It's one thing, if the landlord didn't get paid the rent, we can't make them liable for it. But there are some business owners who are, um, taking advantage of this provision, and that just results, because it's far harder to collect from the tenants. Uh, the tenants disappear very quickly. Um, often, they're corporate entities where there's no personal liability. Um, so that's, that is an issue with the UNO tax.
So on a separate note, if, and I'd ask this of, I think, Finance and Revenue, if you could come back to us with the methods of how they're going to collect these delinquent taxes across the board, not today, another time in the future, I would love to see that detail of how we're going to go about collecting all these delinquencies. One, one last question. There's an attrition rate right now in the department of like 19.2%, and I'm just wondering, that bell had to ring quicker than my normal time. You set that short.
It wasn't me.
That's okay. Um, is there a problem, like, keeping people? Is it the salaries that are too low, or what's the issue?
Absolutely. It's the salaries. Uh, though we've had some, uh, recent raises to get people back to step and some merit raises, uh, we, uh, the example I give is that the young man we hired, Damaris Walker, who's our last hire, um, he's going to be starting at $50,867. And I guarantee you, he's probably the lowest-paid graduate of Yale Law School for his class. And, but we had, you know, we were able to persuade him to, to, to come over. But I also think, in addition to salary, which is a big deal retaining people, um, the sense of morale, that, so we, we are, folks didn't have names in their, on their doors. Uh, we have bedbugs. Everybody has bedbugs. But, you know, we have issues like that. Uh, and so it requires a leadership, uh, being present, you know, being able to tell people that they're doing a good job. I try to go to court hearings, so that the young attorneys know I'm there. Uh, and, and it's the sense of working together. Whenever someone mocks the Law Department, which you'd be surprised, happens quite frequently, I'd say, you know, to try to push back and to have, uh, pride in, in the work we do. So we, we're hoping to get that number down, but until there's real salary adjustments, uh, all this stuff will be sort of period victories.
Where do those adjustments have to come from?
Um, we'll just, we'll work with budget and, and we'll, you know, I know we've been speaking with the defenders to try to get some parity and, you know-
I mean, you have $750 million across the board of delinquent taxes. It seems to me it's worth it to pay people more money to collect it.
Well, in that case, Frank is the most important person.
Absolutely.
Because if we can get more money in, we can pay more. We would love that. But, you know, that, 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 that's always a challenge for us, and, you know, that hasn't gone away.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And that buzzer went off by accident, sir. Just to let you know. Uh, Councilman Talbomberger?
Yes. Two very quick questions. Uh, Mr. City Solicitor, the, the, the average salary, would you say, what, what would you say that is?
Um, I have, I have it somewhere in my, in my testimony.
Well, approximately. I'm not going to-
Um, it's about, what is it? Average full-time staff is, uh, $65,000. That, that's everyone.
To, to make your goals, and I think they're very good, for, for diversity and for keeping and, and getting very highly talented young people, what would you like that range to be?
Um, a lot higher.
Well, that's the question.
Uh, no, it's something that we're exploring. And, and, um, I always try to get Anna Adams not to be upset at me if I keep asking for more money. But, uh, you know, it's, it's a, it's a real challenge. And, and really, what we, when we had the last, uh, the, the merit raises, uh, I was able to allocate more money to our younger attorneys, because particularly for DHS, they're, they're going to court in child welfare, they're completely overwhelmed with the amount of cases. But they're getting paid $51,000 a year, on top of the debt they have. I mean, that, that's, that's the challenge. So, you know, we're, I'm, I'm happy to continue talking about, uh, salary adjustments, because no matter what, what else we talk about, uh, if we don't address that, our, our attrition rate will always be in the high double digits, without question. And we won't be able to recruit the talented people we have. And I, the way I sell the Law Department is that we're doing work that you can't do anywhere else.
Correct.
Uh, but at the end of the day, people have families and, and-
Would, would there be any way that we could have a program that while they're in your employ, the, the debt could be possibly paid, the teachers do it?
I think there've been, there've been, uh, talk of that, and we're, we're happy to explore it.
Okay. I'd like to be involved in those discussions, if possible.
Absolutely. I, we appreciate, we appreciate your interest in that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dom raised one finger. I think he means one question. Councilman Dom?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, Land Bank, 1,020 city-owned properties were approved for transfer on April 6 into the Land Bank. Have these properties been transferred?
I, I, that's something, uh-
You can let me know.
Yeah. Uh, I'm told, 850 have been transferred.
All right. So here's my concern. I'll just, the statistics that I saw, we spent $20 million a year on vacant properties, of which could produce $2 million a year in real estate taxes. So it'll take us 10 years, once we get rid of them, to make up for the cost per year. So this is a focus, we have to get rid of these properties and get them into the hands of people paying taxes. But we've got to get rid of them and get them off our books. It's 20 million a year to maintain them. So whatever you can do to help us, it's a huge problem.
That's something we'll be focused on.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.